Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session of January the 19th of 2021 of the Limestone County Commission Public Comment. What do we have?
Yolanda Bailey.
Yolanda, if you don't mind, step right up to the microphone, please.
Good morning, Yolanda.
Good morning, Yolanda.
I'm Yolanda Bailey with Avenue Insights and Analytics. With me, I have Randy Gotakey. Just to give you a little background, before Randy and I both started working with Avenue Insights, we used to work for, I used to work for the County Commission Association, and Randy worked for Jefferson County. Avenue Insights, for those that are new commissioners, we've been around for over 40 years, primarily handling sales tax collection for cities and counties. The main difference, I came and presented to the commission back in February, and then we got hit with COVID and all of that. So, just wanted to give you all a refresher. The main difference between us and the Department of Revenue is that as we get money in, we go ahead and process it and send it on to you. So, rather than getting deposits once a week, you'll get deposits two to three times per week. And also, our cost is lower than the Department of Revenue. They're at 654 or 2%. We're at, we're offering Limestone County 268 or 1 and 1/2%. We collect sales tax collection for 47 of the 67 counties. I have them listed on, in that packet that I gave you all, as well as we collect for 228 cities throughout Alabama. I put together a fee comparison showing y'all, which I've attached that as well, showing you all the savings that we can save y'all over between August 8th, 2018 through July 2019 is the information that I had. We can save you all at least $116,000 in sales tax administration. And if your taxpayers remit through one spot, they can continue to remit through one spot. We bank it the same, bank it's one spot, so we get our money a little faster. Nothing would change. We would just need to, you all will have to notify the Department of Revenue that you want to switch, and I've attached a resolution in there. If you all pass it within the next 30 days, we can start collection April 1st with taxes due by May the 20th. We will notify all the taxpayers on your behalf. And nothing really would change. It's just the way of savings, administration fees for Limestone County. We used to collect for you all back in 2007. Things have definitely changed with our company as far as online enhancements, reporting portal and all of that. Everything is available online. I sent Ms. Ellen a sample of a portal that she can go to and look at all our online reports. So, I can entertain any questions that you all might have pertaining to sales tax collection and the possibility of looking at us for tax administration.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't. The only thing I would say is that Ellen right there is who you probably need to be speaking to, and Emily as much as anybody is us, because when they come to us and they make the suggestions or they tell us it's a feasible change, or it's a monetary, much, much better change, then you're looking at people that are, that are probably going to go along with that.
Okay.
So, as far as coming to us, that's good. We'll be the ones to get the vote on it. But that lady right there and our CFO are the people that really need to be the ones involved in it. Because we, we value their opinions very, very much.
Understandable.
Any other comments or questions?
What happened in 2007? How come we're not still doing?
I think that at that time, we didn't have online reporting portal as well, and I think there were some, I think there was some communication disconnect, but all of that has changed. I would be the point of contact for Ms. Ellen. And plus, we have a separate line for client support that she can have access to. And like I said, the online reporting portal is there 24/7 if there's anything that she needs to look at. There's about 11 different reports available out there, so we have enhanced quite a bit.
Good deal. Yes. Thank you for coming in and sharing with us. Anybody have any more?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take it under advisement and go from there. But like I said, to get with Emily and Ellen on it, that would be the people that can answer any question we have with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Cory Craig.
Cory Craig, if you don't mind, step right up here for me. You were roadside?
Yes, sir. IBM Solutions.
Okay.
Yeah, it used to be roadside. I've been known by roadside. Mark asked me to come in today, talk to y'all about our herbicide program. For those of you who don't know, some new guys, we've been involved in the herbicide program for Limestone County for four or five years now, kind of revamped program, rewrote it, and have trained the applicators up to do the, to do the program the way that we do our programs in-house. Mark called me in November and asked about training a new applicator, because one applicator moved on to a different position. I've been on him for a couple of years about redoing one of the trucks that y'all have in the fleet. So, that conversation led to me presenting the idea for us just taking the program over. Let us come in here, bring our vehicles in to do the actual application itself. We're doing this now for Limestone, Lauderdale County. Our program in Madison County this year is doubling in size, and Morgan County is probably going to double or triple in size. Most of the people, most of the counties that we've consulted with over the years have just transitioned over into being application customers of ours. There's a lot of pros and cons, and we can go into as much of that detail as you want to. You know, for y'all's situation, what you have going on right now, and as much growth and the stage that you're in, it's just kind of my opinion, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put a lot of money into new vehicles, new equipment, new personnel, that's just going to get taken away to go run a dump truck or whatever else. They can be more efficiently used by doing the paving services or sign crews or whatever. And for the amount of money that you would be spending to get us to come in to do the work, you forego the liability. That becomes our responsibility. And, and we just basically come in and take over and get it done, you know, in a timely fashion. Me and Mark kind of talked a little bit about the numbers. There will be an increase in, in costs for, for y'all. There's some things that's going to be kind of hard. Mark's going to have to determine, you know, what the cost savings is going to be by allowing the two people that would be making the applications to then go and use their resources to do other projects, so forth and so on. No downtime there. Because they, you know, with, with herbicide applications, the absolute most important thing is we have to get that application done in a very short window. When first took this program over, it was about three months per application. We shrunk that window down to three weeks. And Jason told me, y'all, y'all saw some huge advantages to not having to rent equipment or having to rent equipment later on into the year. So, we saw a lot of cost savings there. So, we got to keep everything down to that short, narrow window, and that's where we can bring in three or four trucks if we need to, get it done in a short amount of time. And then you're right back into that same, same scenario with you where we first started.
Would we still, on bridge spraying and stuff, that would still be a separate thing? That'd be aside from what we're, if we have y'all do it all?
Well, we can set this up in multiple different ways. So, like I told Mark, it all comes down to money. Y'all've got to decide if it's something that's beneficial for you, and you've got to decide how to spend the money. So, what we're doing in Lauderdale County is, we've classified everything into A, B, C roads. We're taking care of the A, B roads, and since they have a truck and they have an applicator that can work sometimes, he's going to take care of the C roads. Same thing here. That way, we don't have to do them all. And so, A has the highest priority, B has moderate priority, C has less priority, because maybe it's about, of course, the newbie farm or something, where they, they spray most of the stuff anyway. You know, it's not really a huge hazard on, on the side of the road. So, we can tailor our services, whatever benefits Limestone County the most. So, you're going to have a truck. We don't have to spend any money on a new truck. You're going to have a truck where if your guy gets some slack, maybe he's not paving a road, maybe he doesn't have signs to replace, he can go out and we'll still assist him on, on what to do to do those bridges, if that's in y'all's best benefit. And you still have our pricing structure in place, that if he doesn't have that time, we can still send our crews through and, and take care of it for you. Y'all are just in a unique position. I mean, I deal with about 200 counties, and y'all are in a very unique situation now with all the growth that you have going on. And it just, it makes sense for us to be able to come in, take the liability off of you, and get that timing, the most important part, you know, in that window that it's going to work.
And our staffing plan is the same. So, I mean, we're not getting extra new employees. So, we're using our employees on more than one job a lot.
Kind of, just kind of giving you an idea about the cost. The cost increase to switch to this, to this plan would be about the cost of hiring one new employee. But one new employee is not, isn't going to make a huge impact on the road versus us being able to take the two, two guys we already have and just saying, okay, they are going to be on the paving crew, or they are going to be on the sign crew, and that's it. So...
We just change their job description?
So, their job description will change. And we probably keep one of those job descriptions the same, because like he said, there's going to be times where we need to go in, maybe we need to spray bridges.
Yeah.
And instead of what y'all have been spending on spraying bridges, we roll that into paying on this program, and our guys can take care of some of those things. I mean, there, there are, there's positives and negatives, just like every situation and every change. So, I, I'll be happy to sit down and talk with you individually and let you know kind of what, what kind of costs we're looking at and those kinds of things. But if you, if you just really just break it down, we've got a truck, one, one of the two trucks we have that's in bad shape. That, yeah, like he said, he's been, he's been telling me for years, listen, we're about to lose this one.
It's, just to put it, it's the last stick shift roadside sprayer that I know of. And we've replaced a bunch of them, but it's the last one, so it still works.
We do have one, and, but, and it is functioning. But there will come a day where I'm going to say, listen, we're either going to double the amount of time that it takes us to put the chemicals out, or we're going to have to replace the truck. And that's at minimum $50,000.
Minimum, yeah.
I mean, if we bought new, 180, 190,000.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so there's those things we've got to think about, too. And then liability, I know one, that's been one of the biggest things. And having roadside assist us has reduced a lot of our liability in that when we go out and we do spray, they've got the technical background that we don't necessarily concentrate on vegetation management to the point that they do. They can come out and determine were we at fault, were, did we make a mistake, or was there something else involved? They've been able to do that. But they'll be, they'll, they'll still be doing that, but it'll be their liability, because it'll be their personnel.
Our responsibility.
We've had farmers spray, kill everything, and then come back and blame it on us.
Yeah.
Well, it was not us. We didn't even spray that road for that period of time. So, it's easier if you've got that documentation showing who did it and when it was done.
Well, and too, from, from when, when we first took this over and came in here from, as a truly consulting basis, the, the digital and the GIS side of, of our business has grown exponentially. So, we, we almost have autonomous capabilities on the roadside sprayers now. So, we can digitize everything that we do and be able to show you exactly what we did, exactly where we did it, same day. So, it's not, it's not like we were filling out a paper report and say, well, did we spray this road or we not? I can tell you exactly what time we sprayed that road.
Tell us what direction the wind was blowing, what the most probable was.
I mean, but, but it's wired to do that.
No.
You're not, you're not.
No.
State doesn't regard.
Nope, not at all. It's a very, very archaic regulatory system.
Yeah, I mean, our, our paper trail that we put together meets the minimums.
Yeah.
I mean, what, what he, what they can do exceeds the minimums. But, I mean, do we want to, do we want to meet minimums, or do we want to exceed? So, I mean, that, that's, that's the situation. We did get checked.
Our attorney could probably tell us that.
We did get checked two years ago, and we had some issues that we had to correct. But, but like I said, I mean, they were, the guy that came in and checked us, he was kind enough to give us an opportunity to make the corrections and do what we needed to do. The next guy may not, if, if we make, if we're...
That storage and all that kind of stuff.
And so, yeah, so like I said, it's a, it's, it's a situation where that liability kind of goes away. Negative is, is it is an increased cost. Then so, like, I mean, if you wouldn't be in a position to essentially add a person to our department, then you're not going to be necessarily in a position to pay that increased cost. We just have to keep squeezing. So, I mean, so that, that's kind of the, I mean, there's pros and cons.
Sometimes you learn from environmental stuff, though. Is it easier to pay upfront, or is it easier to pay on the back?
Yeah. And my, and my proposal maintains Limestone County purchasing the herbicide. So, Limestone, the state of Alabama, ACCA has more purchasing power than I do, even though I buy twice as much as ACCA. So, it's a little bit cheaper for y'all to continue to buy the product. You would still have the storage requirements, and we would just take that product out of storage, and then we would apply it to your roadside, just like we do with 30 other counties in the state.
Well, my suggestion would be, let's, you and Mark get together, put together a plan and propose back to us A, B, C in a scenario, and we'll go from there. I mean, that would be... I, I'll be happy to work with your guys to, to, to look at your classification of roads so that we kind of know what, if we do, like you said, Lauderdale County has the A and B, and then we have, I mean, if, just kind of propose a different option. If you were to spray it, we, we kind of know what our cost would be. If you sprayed every road in the county two to three times a year, we know what that cost would be. But is there cost savings, or is there a benefit for us taking on some of those lower volume roads or lower? And, and, and so, I, I'll be happy to work with your guys, because I, I'm not sure with your classification. That's the one thing I can't...
Sure, sure. Well, and I'm going to lean heavily on you to see, because there's been, since I grew up here, there's been a lot of changes to what roads are, have become priorities and what hasn't. So, there's still some knowledge that, that happens there. So, and also, the only hiccup in, in changing into us doing this application is, the two applicators you've had, one's moved on, the two applicators you had know these roads really well. They know the no-spray areas. We would be incorporating all that stuff into our digital maps, and there is going to be a few little hiccups here and there where we sprayed somebody's fence corner that we weren't supposed to. You're going to get that phone call. We'll handle it, but that, there's going to be a transition time there if we decide to go down that road.
Well, Darryl, I can't speak for these two, but Darryl would tell you, and the way I've been, if it's the right of way, if it's not being cut, it's not being maintained, I don't care if the signs there are not, spray it.
Yeah.
Because they'll put up a sign and then let this weeds grow six feet over the top of the sign. So, that's our responsibility. So, at the end of the day, I want District 3 sprayed. So, I don't know how, how they'll be, but, you know, there's so many people that stick those signs up and then never do anything about it, because they just don't want the road sprayed. Well, that's not the way it works. We're responsible for that.
See it all the time.
Well, what happens is, is people don't know the difference between grass and weeds. You go out and kill their weeds, and then you hear, you've killed my grass.
Yeah.
You didn't have any grass. We killed your weeds. That's what we're spraying for.
Yeah. So, let's get started on that pretty quick. We're in a time crunch here, because your applicators usually start spraying in February and get it done for March 1st. So, we kind of need to follow along those, those guidelines as well. And for us, adding on 800 miles is not a big deal, but we got to get it in our schedule. So, just...
How quick can you do it if, I mean, how quick can you cover 800 miles?
Depends on how many trucks we bring in.
Okay.
I mean, two to three weeks.
Okay.
No problem.
Well, I would say just get with Mark on it, and y'all sit down, and I mean, you know, that way we'd have, we can, like I have you done here, have us a cost saving and all that, you know, what we can figure out, what it would be, and our pros and cons, and we'll weigh it from there.
Yeah, and I, I want you to know, I want to look at that contract real close, because I was not satisfied last year with how it went about.
Yeah, we skipped, and that, and that, it's not necessarily here, so I'm putting some of that on Mark.
Okay. Well, I trust Mark's...
We skipped the spraying.
There, there, we, we did, we did two sprays, because, I mean, we, we got together and we changed our chemical makeup last year to only do two sprays. Regularly, we've done three.
Yeah.
So, but then we got hit with a much wetter growing season, and that third, that third application became, became necessary.
Yeah.
And we kind of, we, we had depleted our spray budget, our, our materials budget, because we used a more expensive chemical really on those, on those first two sprays.
Whether you're, whether you're spraying lawns, whether you're spraying row crops, whether you're spraying turf fields or roadside, it doesn't matter, you cannot control the exogod. And if we come in and we have an extremely wet summer, there's nothing you can do about that. All except have the money, have the money in the budget.
Clear this out.
That's right.
Well, have the money in the budget to go back in and do a third application. Like I told Mark, we need to budget three applications with the intent of doing two. And just have that extra one sitting there, just in case we do have another wet summer like we did have last.
We did in last year.
Yeah.
All right. We got, we got bit, too.
We did. We did. That became toward the end of the year, it became a lot more mowing than there had been the last four years. So, no, last year was, we, we took a step back that we shouldn't have taken.
Might have had a D in there for our third budget. But I mean, just, I mean, come on with, you know, weigh all the options here, and let's get it all together.
We've got it. We'll just present it to you. But like I said, the, the decision on which way you want to go needs to be made one way or the other, because we got to get up here and get somebody trained, too. Because we are still consulting with, with Limestone County. So, if we have, if we have to train another applicator, we got to get that done. If we got to modify a truck, we got to get that done.
Well, we're behind eight ball now, because state's already sprayed pre-emerge.
Yeah, they, they spend wastefully, though. Hey, hey, Limestone County does not do a state program, okay?
No, no, we do not follow the state program.
We do not follow the state.
Because when we followed the state program...
You go broke.
Yeah, we, we, we did not do well.
Well, the pre-emerge only lasts so many days.
No, no, that's the whole point. We're, we're pre-emerge and post-emerge. Yeah, there's, the winter application is the by far most important application we do, and it is the most expensive, and it is the most product that we put out throughout the year.
You say winter, or what month are you talking about?
Well, usually between November and end of February. We have a bigger window. Our second window...
That's most important for the pre-emerge.
Yeah, well, setting up the whole program, setting up the whole year, yeah. Because if you're late, if you're late on that winter application, you're, the rest of your year is shot.
Well, like I said, just get with Mark on it, and y'all work us out of, y'all just work us out of a proposal, and we'll go from there.
And do it, can you do it today?
I can't today. I got to get back. But I'll work with him. We'll get everything done. We, we've pretty much got all that done now. We just got to centralize it, present it.
I mean, there's a few things that I, that I need to have a better understanding of, of, but, but yeah. I can, I can pretty much tell you today the different numbers. But like I said, there's a few things, like, like road categories and that kind of stuff, just to make sure we're on the same page, so that I can, I can speak to that.
And Mr. Bartstow and, and Ladon here, they, I've got two tractors and two bushhogs. I don't have two men to run two tractors and two bushhogs all the time. So, what y'all do or what we do, I can take a tractor away, I can take a man away, and then with my five totally employees that I've got, I can probably put them doing something else during that time period. So, that...
And a properly, a properly executed herbicide program with a little bit of good weather, you know, gets you all the way into July, August, where you have to mow, and hopefully even further than that, as long as we don't have that extremely wet summertime.
And with the option, with our E option there, which still have a truck, we could do little things if we hit...
Exactly, exactly.
And that would be, we'd keep one applicator doing what he'd do.
The, the whole deal is to have a desirable grass, like Bermuda.
Bermuda, yeah.
And that's no...
And we had, two years ago, we'd gotten to the point that everybody was bragging on us. We were all tickled to death, high-fiving everybody, and then last year it was just...
We had record, we had record rain in February, and it just didn't stop all the way till August.
I think last year was just odd-on-ever situation. I mean, it was...
Last year out.
We're just going, we're going to cancel it out and start over here.
Okay. Let me out one question here. When you say spray a bridge, what's the difference there than the, the right of way?
Well, so roadside vegetation management, that's pretty much everything on the edge of the road out to the, out to the, the right of way, edge of the right of, whatever that is.
Right.
We spray around bridges for Jason and, and others, where we, we come up and we do a buffer zone around that bridge so that you can get in there and inspect it. We don't have any woody vegetation growing up around the bridges, and that's more of a hand application because of the sensitive nature of that stream. So, we have to use different products, and we have to follow different guidelines to make sure that we, we get the product where it needs to go and it doesn't end up in the water.
Stuff that's twice as big around as your thumb, take care of it when it's already dormant.
Kind of brush, maybe.
Right. Woody species, woody species.
And then I don't have to go in there with a pack of oil. Track hole or anything, and clean out so much, because my water flows under bridges there. We started that four years ago, and I've got three that we haven't touched in, in four years. And that's, that's kind of odd, you know, because right now, all this water and everything, debris, you have to clean it out, and that, that helped me out a lot.
The idea is getting everything on a cycle. I mean, getting on a three-year cycle, and you'll never have to do any kind of mechanical operations to it again, as long as you maintain that cycle.
A lot of it makes it easier on the bridge inspection stuff.
Exactly, exactly.
Makes it easier on the job. Well, like I said, thank you. Any more questions, anymore?
And y'all, most of all, y'all have my information. You want to call and talk individually about different things or how it works, feel free. Okay?
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Ellen?
No, we did not.
All right, thank you. All right. First thing on the agenda for today would be resolutions, orders, be to approve resolution to implement the COVID-19 emergency paid sick leave to eligible employees until June the 30th of 2021. And I'll brief on this just a second. What this is, is ACC has recommended this, ACCA. You know, they have, it has expired, the COVID leave has, for everybody that has done taking it. This will make the ones that hadn't taken it eligible for it, and with hopes that we might get reimbursed for it later. Any discussion with it, or any, I got anything with it? Anybody have, nobody discussion with the resolution? All right. No discussion. We'll move on. Under contracts, agreements, and grants, we have none, no budget revisions, no merchant purchases, no board appointments, award to bid, and under personnel action. The first one on here will be to transfer Michaela Kennedy to Appraiser and Revenue Office. And anybody have any discussion with her? All right, no discussion with her. And the next for two, we'll just take up together if it's fine with y'all. We got to promote Cameron Wright and Doug Watson to Equipment Operator 2s in Engineering. And as far as I know, they've met all their requirements. Now, Mark, you want to brief on that or anything?
Yeah, they, I mean, they hired in six months ago. They, they, in that period of time, they've gotten their CDL and, and, and done everything that they were asked to do. So, so that's why I'm, I'm requesting that you, that we make this promotion for them.
Any discussion with either one of the two? Any questions? All right. That's just good. They got their CDLs. It makes them more valuable of an employee.
Oh, absolutely.
So, no discussion with either one of them. Move on. We have merit increases. We have four listed under the merit increases. Anybody have any discussion with any of the four?
Chairman, Joseph has gone to get two more names to add to the merit increases.
Okay. Well, we'll have, let the minutes be known, that we'll have two more on the merit increases that'll be added here. Out of the, I both guess presume both of them out of the License Commission office, so. Got two more to be on there. I don't know the names yet, but if he gets back in a second, we'll have any discussion with, we'll come back. All right, Engineers Report. Mr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just have one subdivision for your consideration. It's Summer Lynn Subdivision. It is a minor. It's preliminary and final, creating two lots in District 2. It's on the south side of Highway 72, east of East Limestone Road. If you're going towards Madison, it's that large tract to land that's got the power lines going through it before you get to county line. So, they're, they're, they're subdividing these two lots for something else. I mean, so it's just, this is kind of a planning phase move for them, so it's not like residential lots. But it does meet all of our requirements for minor subdivision.
All right. Any discussion with the subdivision? Anybody got anything else from Mr. Massey?
We did get the Lowboy back late, late last week. It was, it was a hydraulic valve issue. They had to rebuild a valve to get it going so that we could get the, the back end up and down. So, it is back. We did do some research about some, some other trailer options. And so, we're, a detached neck trailer is about $30,000, $35,000. Could get as expensive as 40, depending on what bells and whistles you add. But, but that, and that's, that's suited for moving like the dozers and the excavators and such. If we want more of like a do-all trailer that we can move dozers, excavators, our paving equipment, everything, that's about an $80,000 trailer. So, my suggestion would be, we, we, we need to rebuild some of the frame on our trailer. There's, there's a lot of it that's broke, and a lot of it's broke because of the type of equipment we've been hauling on it. We believe if we repair that trailer, just take it, take the running boards and everything off and rebuild the frame on it, that it will, it will work for our paving equipment. What gets us is these larger excavators and dozers and things. So, as long as we're, I mean, as long as we're continuing to haul of those, we're either going to continue breaking our trailer, or, or we need to buy another trailer, which would be, probably get us back down into that $30,000 or $35,000 trailer. And to where we can just, we can just switch out and, and, and use a drop deck for this, the more kind of breakover tract equipment. And then, and we can move our milling machine with it, but that's about the only piece of equipment we can move using.
Have we got the money in? Have you got it?
We, we just, we just sold a bunch of things. We do, we were look, we're looking at getting a broom using the, the GovDeals funds for, like, to attach on a tractor or something like that for a, a secondary broom option. But our GovDeals items that we sold did come back better than I was expecting. I mean, we can, we can't cover the entire cost, but we can cover a, a, a large portion of it, depending on where this broom falls in. So, I, I think we're going to be to where we could cover around $20,000 or $25,000 of that cost.
One of the conversations that I would like for us to have, too, if we do buy another trailer, which I know we're too late this year, is according to how this Lowboy tractor sells. If this Lowboy tractor does well, I would suggest maybe next year, us buying two Lowboy tractors that matched to pull the two trailers. You know, because we use that other truck for, for pulling our other thing. We put a panel hitch on it and use it to pull the panel hitch trailer. So, you know, I mean, that way, when we go to pave or whatever, we could...
We have put the panel hitch on it. We, we've been using it to pull skid steers and things like that. But, I mean, it's just, I mean, I think like Collins is saying, is that it would be, it, being able to keep it hooked up and keep both trailers hooked up would, would be an efficiency.
It's according to how this truck sells, but if this truck does well, you know, if it, if that program works out as well as the dump trucks has, you know, if we could run it for little cost per year, it would, I think that would be a good investment, you know, a good addition to our program and a good addition to the county to have it to where...
Well, the air and heat price is already good, so anything...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, it's according to how this works out for us. But I mean, just next year, that way you would have, and that way, if you have, you know, if we have, you know, go to moving equipment, you'd have two pieces of equipment, you know, that, that's just something to look at for, you know, the next year's program. I was just, if we buy, if we do purchase a trailer this year. So, any more discussion with that?
But like I said, there, there would, I mean, I would have to request a, a budget amendment to, to be able to cover the entire cost. But I do think even after buying that, that... but I do think even after buying that, that, um, that other broom option, I do think we can cover twenty to twenty-five thousand of that.
So, we're looking at ten to fifteen thousand dollar short. I mean, that would, to me, I think that'd be a good investment to have a trailer to where we could haul bigger and better equipment. I mean, I don't know about y'all, but.
So, I agree.
Yeah, do we still have the old tractor?
Uh, we have the blue, yeah, the.
Are you going to sell it?
Oh, no, we're, we're planning on keeping it.
Yeah.
We, we've been, we've been, we've had, put a panel hitch on it, we've been using it to haul, uh, one of our panel hitch trailers with the skid steer and the attachments and.
And it has hardly any miles on it, but.
It, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a fine truck.
That panel hitch trailer is just too much for a one-ton truck, and you, I mean, safety is your number one key, you know, and I mean, you want to get everybody home with their family safe, and I don't, you know, that truck could just stop it so much better and handle it so much better. Um, let me back up here just a second while, um, we've got three more, uh, merit increases. If nobody has any discussion with either one of them, Hope Beatty, um, Denise Weyms, and Sandra Gaines will be added from the License Commission Office on the merit increases. Anybody having discussion with the three, three of them? So, no discussion with that, we'll move on further. Other business here, which will be what we kind of touched on there, um, be to approve to purchase ten new Mack Granite GR sixty-four F dump trucks and one twenty-twenty-one, um, Mack Pinnacle, um, PEI sixty-four T Lowboy tractor through the ACCA Joint Bed Program and seek financial, uh, financing an amount of one million seven hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Any discussion with that? All right, so, no discussion with that. We'll move on to our, so we have no schedule of public hearings, report of officers, Commissioner Sammett?
I don't have anything this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bartstow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Bama Concrete for being willing to alleviate one of their concerns of the quarry residents. Apparently, when a, a concrete truck, concrete gets dry in a truck, you have to get in it and beat it out with a hammer, and that doesn't work well at midnight or at three o'clock in the morning. So, they agreed to, uh, move that process to another location where they won't keep the neighborhood up at night, and I appreciate their willingness to do that. I've probably got some more work to do out in that area. I think Mark's going to help me out with that, so, uh, we'll see how that goes. But, uh, I appreciate Bama working, being concerned with the neighborhood, and hopefully other folks will too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartstow. Commissioner Black?